All right, why don't we go ahead and get started if we can. Welcome to the open public portion of tonight's work session. We're delighted that you're all here with us tonight. Mr. Shields or Mr. Stoddard, I don't know which will be speaking, but we're looking forward to hearing about the bicycle plan you put together.
And I'm going to turn it right over to Paul, but I would just say that what our goal tonight is, is to get council briefed on the basic contours of the plan as it is currently conceived, get your input on it, and tee it up for council's formal review and formal action in June. And so this is a first look at it, but we would like to move this through the process with the benefit of your input.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Stoddard.
All right. Thank you, Mayor, members of council. So as Wyatt said, this is the council's first look at this, first work session. Already, we've taken this out, staff has already taken this out to the CACT, to the Planning Commission, to the ESC, one public meeting, public surveys going on now through Survey Monkey, and so far, the public response has been very positive to this, and so I hope that means that we're on the right track with this effort. Before I jump into the slides, I just want to mention a couple of things that are in the staff report, and that is the grounding in the city's comprehensive plan and mobility for all modes. The mobility for all modes plan sets a vision of providing transportation options and travel choices, and one of the specifics actions called for in that plan was to develop a bike master plan, and so this planning effort is a direct response to that call for action. And so with that, I'll jump into the slides from the presentation. So why a bicycle master plan? What's the importance of this for the community? First is that there's a growing demand for bicycling, certainly nationally, but also regionally, and what this shows is that there's sort of a latent demand, an unmet demand for facilities, that people want a bike, but they don't necessarily feel safe doing so. And bicycling in general is a positive thing for communities to promote. There are economic benefits to biking, they can be both on the private side and the public side. On the private side, it can save people the cost of operating a second car for the household or a third car for the household, which can save $9,000 a year. There are also public benefits. It's a lot less expensive to provide transportation capacity for people on bikes than it is to provide that capacity for people in cars. There are environmental benefits for biking. It's a reduction in energy use, it's a reduction in emissions. As highlighted in the plan, we all live in a non-attainment area for air quality, so anything we can do is good on that front. Also, public health. This is something that really sort of the US in general has gotten away from, and that's the incorporation of physical activity into day-to-day life. And so bicycling as a travel option is a way to get that back into people's everyday routines. And then also equity. If the area, sort of, if the DC area were to be sort of auto-dependent, then it really does cut a lot of people out. So it's people who can't afford cars, people who aren't allowed to drive cars, there are a lot of people who don't have driver's licenses, especially people that are under 16, none of them do. And so providing other travel options is important.
... to have a house.
And so the agenda for tonight, I started off by motivating the master plan. I'll talk a little bit about what a master plan is and the planning process used for this effort, and then I'll jump into the plan elements that are in the draft plan so far, looking at sort of regional context, draft routes, corridors for bike share, and then different kinds of bike facilities in the implementation process. And then I'll open it up to questions, answer, or feedback. So what is a master plan? A master plan is designed to address specific needs and specific interests of the city. For example, the city has a bus stop and bus shelter master plan that specifies spacing and siting and guidelines and design for bus shelters and bus stops. The West End Park specifies how the park should be developed. And so with a master plan, there's some set of existing conditions and a context for planning, policy goals that the city's trying to achieve, and so future conditions that would realize those goals, and then an implementation strategy for getting the city from where it is to where it wants to go. Planning process for this particular effort was a kickoff in March of this year, taking the effort out to the CACT, Citizens Advisory Committee on Transportation, and the Planning Commission. And then that led into sort of the plan development phase, which is March, April, and now May, going through community open houses, launching the web survey, going out to other boards and commissions, and then bringing it up to City Council for a work session. And if this stays on schedule, then we'd actually begin the approval process in late May, getting recommendations from the CACT and Planning Commission, and then, as was mentioned earlier, bringing it back in June for another City Council work session and Context, I mentioned previously, there's a growing use of bicycles for transportation in the region. This is a map, and the colors indicate different areas that are, where people are using bicycling to commute to work, darker areas means more people. And this just generally shows that sort of, especially in the closer in regions, the closer you get to DC, the more and more people are using bicycles, and it's typically in sort of the denser areas, which is also starting to include City of Falls Church. And so then the vision for this planning effort, and this comes directly out of the comprehensive plan, is to provide a network of bicycle routes that connects the city's commercial areas and neighborhoods, transit facilities, schools, regional bike facilities, and designated bike routes in neighboring jurisdictions. And so as I get to sort of the draft map of future routes through the city, this will basically serve as sort of a checklist, and all these things will be connected by those future routes. So what's in the city today? W&amp;O D Trail moving from west to east or east to west, depending on your direction, and then the shero routes along Park Avenue and Maple Avenue that were installed last year, and then the signed bicycle route that travels sort of around the city that was done previously. And this is an example of what's going on in the region in terms of existing bike facilities. Usually, each of these little red dots represents a council of, a Regional Council of Governments Activity Center, which is a concentration of economic residential retail activity. And these colored lines here, these bubbles, are distances from the city border, and here this first one is two and a half miles, and the second one is five miles. Assuming someone's able to travel at about 10 miles an hour on a bike, this is sort of what's within range of the city within 15 minutes, and then what's within range of the city within 30 minutes, provided they could travel in a straight line.
[laughter]
And this is what Arlington County and Fairfax County are planning for in the future. So they're planning to, I'll go back one slide, this is the existing bicycle network in the region, and this is what those two counties are planning for in the future. So they're planning for a well-connected set of facilities that provides access to these regional activity centers. And so this is really an opportunity for the city to follow up on their efforts and provide that same sort of connection and provide those same sorts of travel options to get to all of these places. And so then the effort there to provide the same level of connections in and through and to the city builds on the existing network. So it's the W&amp;O D Trail, Park Avenue, and Maple Avenue, and then the route that goes around the city has been rerouted a little bit to take advantage of a greenway that's planned in the Parks Comprehensive Plan, Parks for People, and then rerouting to use traffic signals to get across these major roads. A traffic signal will get across Broad, a traffic signal will get across South Washington, and then trying to take advantage of other greenways that are planned for the city, getting off-street facilities where they're possible, taking advantage of paper streets where we can, and then providing those connections along the commercial corridors, but also to the city's schools. And so that's the future route that's planned in the draft plan. And then facility types. One thing I'll say about this plan is that this plan does not assume any kind of particular facility on any particular route. So the idea is to leave flexibility when it comes time to make those decisions. And the routes could be a range of things. It could be sheros, as exist on Park Avenue and Maple Avenue today. It could be bike lanes, which people have probably seen in other communities in the region. This is an example from Arlington County, a bike lane that's able to preserve on-street parking. So I want to point out that bike lanes doesn't necessarily mean removal of parking, there are ways to fit these things in. And then intersection treatments. This is something that has really started to pick up the pace now that people are biking more and more. They're recognizing that the intersections are where people feel most uncomfortable and where they need the most guidance. And so that can be sort of markings, taking people through the intersection, markings, warnings, sort of people and driving people biking that they're going to need to merge or weave, or it can be providing a place for people who are on bikes to dwell while they're waiting for a traffic signal that puts them in a place where they're easily seen by other people on the street. And all of these facilities are designed to provide safety, predictability, awareness, and that's the guiding principle behind all these things. Since the draft plan doesn't call for any of these particular facilities, the draft plan does leave sort of a process defined for how to choose different facilities when it comes time to build them. So the idea is to be opportunity-driven, look for other projects that are going on, whether they're public maintenance projects, CIP projects, private development projects, and look for connections between those projects and the draft routes. If there are any, ask staff to go out and evaluate the conditions in terms of volume, speeds, parking utilization, and develop several options for what might happen along the route. Hold a public workshop, introduce the various ideas to the public, and get their feedback. What do they like? What do they not like? Do they want it shifted? What do they want to have happen there? And then bring it up to the city manager, and ultimately make it a staff decision about how to implement the route. And so that's the, and so this is sort of the close of the routes discussion, and now I want to jump over to a discussion about bike share. That's another section that's in the plan. Bike share is growing within the region. It started in, well, there was an old system in DC that was then replaced with Capital Bike Share, and that was a joint venture of Arlington County and Washington DC. It's available to anyone in the region, that, any locality that wants to join Arlington. Alexandria is using it, Montgomery County is using it, Fairfax County, as I said, is exploring it. And so the idea is what would, this effort is really designed to answer the question, what would a Capital Bike Share network look like in the City of Falls Church? Arlington County is planning to expand their system out to the East Falls Church Metro, I believe, by 2017 or 2018, and so that would provide an anchor and an opportunity for the city to carry that system into the city's borders. And so unfortunately, the colors on this screen don't show up very well, they show up a little bit better on the plan, but the idea is to identify four specific corridors where bike share stations might go. It could be the Washington Streets Cor, Washington Street corridor with the parallel Maple Avenue, the Broad Street corridor with the parallel Park Avenue, the W&amp;O D Trail, and then Roosevelt Boulevard, providing the connection down to seven corners. And so the idea is just to set a policy guide that says, in the future, the city's looking for opportunities to extend Capital Bike Share, the city wants to extend them along these particular corridors, and when it comes time to implement, the city's going to do it in an opportunity-driven way, similar to the routes.
Go back to the...
Sure.
... for the Mason Row.
Mason Row is planned for this intersection right here, where the W&amp;O D Trail and the Park Avenue and Broad Street corridors come together. And so this is, this is actually an example of how the implementation strategy might work. Look for other projects that are going on, and I'll go back one slide. So Mason Row has already, the development team in their discussions with staff has already asked, how do we get a bike share station there? One of the problems is that developers, whether it's Mason Row, or the Harris Teeter, or the proposal that's being talked about for 400 North Washington, they want to install bike share stations as part of their project, but because city is, because the City of Falls Church isn't a member of the network, they're not able to install them. And so this is really the opportunity-driven sort of portion of implementation that outside funding is looking for ways to build bike share, and so part of this is just making that possible. And so the idea would be looking for private development projects that are coming through, or grant funding that's available for these things, and it's important that the funding cover both, the upfront installation as well as ongoing maintenance. And then city staff would look for opportunities to use those funds to fill in potential gaps or extend along existing corridors. So whether that's building the first corridor in the city, building an expansion off of it, filling in the gaps in the corridor, the idea is to eventually get to a completed network. And so all of these stations would have to come through council approval as they're being developed. If it's a private development project, that's going to need a project approval by the council. If it's a grant, that's going to need a funding approval by the council. So council's going to approve this network all along the way, and then specific station siting in terms of where it is relative to the intersection or on the project site, that would be left as a staff decision. And so I want to close by actually going back to the beginning of the presentation, which is motivating a bike master plan, and that's responding to the growing demand for biking in the region, and then recognizing the many benefits of bicycling as a form of transportation. And now I want to turn it back over to council for your feedback on the plan. Are the routes making the right connections? Are the bike share corridors in the right place? And then what about the level of engagement when it comes to selecting particular facilities? Thank you.
Thank you very much for a very nice presentation. Are there any questions, comments? Mr. Snyder?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Let me get things started a couple ways. First of all, process question. I fear that with the process that you're talking about, we're going to be right back into the complete streets fight, because if we allow the city manager the ability to determine exactly how this is implemented, we're right back to the complete streets fight with a potential for losing parking. So I just think that if we're going to go forward with this, that we got to realize that people want parking on the street in their neighborhoods. So that's got to be a given, in my opinion, going forward. Secondly, I clearly support doing more in terms of biking and more of a planning in the city. I have a specific question, if you could show the map again. One of them had green all over the place, right? But what I'm interested in is the existing designated bike routes in the region. Where are they?
So that's the map of the existing regional routes.
So I'm not seeing, what am I seeing that we need to connect to that's there right now? We've got the, we already have the W&amp;O D Trail, so if one of the arguments is we're going to connect with other regional bike routes, where are they?
So if I jump one slide...
Are those the proposed or the ones that are there now? Because you can propose anything, it's when you go to do something that I...
So these are the proposed routes.
How about the ones that are there now?
So that's what's there now.
Okay. So the argument that we're going to, that we are connecting, at least with existing routes, isn't there, it's whether we want to connect with proposed routes, which may or may not happen. So the next question I have is, if you could flash up the local, the specific local routes. I find it odd that we're not going up Little Falls Street, because we want to connect people to a lot of activities in City Hall. We're directing them through an industrial area at the bottom of Maple and up Maple. So the specific question I have is, why aren't we going up to Little Falls, turning on to Maple, and then, I guess the notion is that South Maple will connect to something somewhere sometime, but that's another proposed route that isn't there now. So I'm a little bit confused, because the better route, it seems to me, is Little Falls Street rather than Maple. I don't understand why you're doing, you're not going up Little Falls Street, because it's the most direct connection from the bike path, the bike trail, the W&amp;O D Trail to City Hall, where we want a lot of activity, because there's a Fall Festival and a lot of other activities.
Mm-hmm. And I can respond to the Little Falls question. When the sheros were installed along Maple Avenue, the question of Maple versus Little Falls was discussed at length by the CACT, and ultimately, it was the CACT that strongly recommended using Maple. They liked Maple because it had a slightly, right, they're both gaining elevation, but Little Falls has a slightly steeper hill as it approaches Great Falls, and so...
Well, there are problems with Maple. You've got a lot of traffic at various times of the day, a huge amount. You have church traffic, and you've got daycare center traffic. So you really have, plus you're closer to Washington, so I would want that whole question reexamined, because it seems an illogical route. I also note that you're planning Hillwood and Great Falls, and I wonder how safe a bike thing is going to be unless it's divided on either of those streets, which are kind of highway-like now. I get it on Park, I even get it on Maple, I get it on Little Falls. What I don't get is on major routes like that, whether it's really going to be safe. It would be like putting them down on Broad Street in some ways. So those are, those are a bunch of questions I have.
Mr. Snyder?
Part process and part specific.
Yeah, Mr. Snyder.
One thing I wanted to mention, Mr. Vice Mayor, we have been monitoring the bike planning for Arlington County and Fairfax County, and they both have recently adopted these updated plans. At the same time, VDOT is looking to put together a regional bike plan for the region. And so one of the reasons we moved this forward to try to get going on this follow-up to the mobility for all modes was to be able to have our regional plan in place by June, so we could integrate it into the regional plan that VDOT is putting together. It's one of the good things they're doing, is working on trying to connect regions. The map behind you shows a little better, just because of the screen quality, but there are connections, for example, down Maple, Fairfax County is showing a connection through Cavalier Trail to Washington Street. Grove Avenue comes off of Haycock down to Grove Avenue in the city. Roosevelt, Sycamore Street turns into Roosevelt Boulevard and comes up to the city, and then we're trying to connect at Hillwood. So we have tried to find, connect each of the new routes, and some of those in the other communities are not designated yet as to how they're going to be handled, but they're designated, here's a route. On a street like Hillwood, there might well be traffic calming aspects of that as well. It's certainly not, you know, sheros could exist very well there, you might consider four-way stops. As you get closer to Annandale, there's the very wide road, but because it's a divided median and mostly a residential street, we thought bringing it up to that point and then over to Roosevelt, where we are making improvements and to connect up to Roosevelt Boulevard, that that would be a good bike trail. So we've worked to try to literally connect to the plans and the routes that have been adopted by our neighbors, so that we can get from place to place, plus then working internally to have, to talk to the community about where internally in the city, aside from those connections, do you want to be. So that's part of the logic behind the timing, to get it done in June, and then also, you know, the external connections and the internal circulation.
I guess, having learned the hard way with the Complete Streets Plan, that I think neighborhoods may have something to say about this, that haven't really been focused on it. I think we also have to determine which of those routes are really safe for bicyclists, because I think some of them aren't. And then finally, I do have a question about Little Falls Street. I still don't get that.
Mr. Brew?
So a couple comments. I think it's great that this is... So in addition to connections to Arlington and Fairfax, yeah?
Thanks. In addition to connections to Fairfax and Arlington, if we can just make sure that there's a, conceptually with what we're doing with the area planning, that they, this plan sort of feeds into that, and that they're not disjointed somehow, and I'm not suggesting that they are, but if we can be mindful of how that, those pieces fit together, and similar to that, if we can think through with some of the mixed-use development projects that are already in the ground, or in process of being in the ground, or going through approvals, just making sure that within the city, that there's interconnectivity there, where we want people to be able to bike to, and just part of that pedestrian mode, and I put bicycles sort of in that pedestrian mode bucket, if you will, making it more pedestrian-friendly. Pedestrian also, for me, includes bicycles in some, in some fashion. And then too, as far as sort of design issues and safety issues, I believe that there was a big tragedy that happened recently in downtown DC, I think, or there has been, with some of the design features of some of the very extensive DC bike system that's going in, with barriers that they're putting in, or lack of barriers in traffic situations. So I think DC and other cities may have had a lot of lessons learned that were on sort of leading edges on the safety factors and apparatus being put in, whether it's sheros, bumpers, separations, et cetera. But if we can just kind of take a look at those features, and if those cities that are very much on the cutting edge have put out sort of best practices in what they've learned from safety perspectives, if we can just kind of gain that awareness as we're doing actually design, I don't think it necessarily fits here per se, conceptually, but when we start getting into design...
And that's, I think, one of the reasons that this is separated into, first, what are the correct routes and who should we connect to? And then decisions about how things are done need to be part of a more detailed discussion, so that those decisions don't get in the way of having the best map and the right connections. I mean, one of the key things in bicycle planning, I think, is just keeping speeds slow, and that's one of the things the city's pretty good at. There also may be opportunities with traffic calming and other things that Paul and his group are working on, you know, to make sure that all those things work together. The small area plans are shown in these, in this document, you can see there's a lot of interface between the commercial areas and these routes, either on the edges or going through them. So we are trying to integrate.
But I think that there is a sense of keeping design and where you put them, I think, sort of go hand in hand, and that's why I'm alluding, that DC, it's worth taking a look at some of the issues that DC has had of where they placed them and the apparatus that they've used to design bike trails. There has been some issues there, and I'm suggesting that we take a look at what other leading cities, and I think DC's done a great job with how much they've been on the forefront of bringing biking to the district, but they've also had some lessons learned and things that they are thinking about doing differently. And that's hitting national news now, it's hitting the biking community. So I think it's worth taking a look now, and DC's just one city, Seattle, Portland, et cetera.
So I'll throw this out. So you're right to mention that DC is actually one of the top biking cities in the US. Sort of the frontrunners are places like Portland, Madison, Wisconsin, the Twin Cities in Minnesota, and then also Seattle's getting up there, but DC is right up there with all the rest. There are a number of informal or formal working groups of, in the region, of staff who work on bicycle and pedestrian issues. So we actually had the Arlington County Bike Staff and the Fairfax County Bike Staff in already to talk about this effort. We're going to be meeting with the Alexandria Staff tomorrow to talk about this with them. And there's a, there's a group that I have the sort of freedom to attend, if time permits, which is a regional ped bike group that's organized by the Council of Government. So those, the infrastructure is already there to allow us to have those lessons learned, and that's something that I would expect the city to do as it goes forward.
Other comments? Mr. Duncan and Mr. Zee?
Thank you.
Mr. Sullivan?
Two questions. One, when the Southwest Street project is finished, the water main project and the paving is done for that, the bike route that's contemplated there is going to be of what nature? Is it going to be sheros, or is there room to do a dedicated bike lane? Have we chosen our preferred option there?
So that's where I want to jump back to the slide on the implementation process. And so this is sort of, Southwest Street could really be sort of a pilot project for how is this process going to work? When you look at Southwest Street today, it's got parallel parking on both sides of the street, and then one travel lane in each direction, and the parallel parking on the west side of the street is not utilized much at all. And the parallel parking on the east side is about half-used. So, you know, a reasonable approach to that street could be to offer up an option where you maintain the parking on the east side of the street where it's used today, and that means you have access to the sidewalk that's on that side of the street. And then you look at other options for how to use that west side of the street that's currently used for parallel parking, but not to any great extent. And so this is why it's important to allow staff to come up with various options, so that you can present these to the community, and you can let the community decide, well, what's the right mix for this street? Because they'll be able to indicate, the community knows best about sort of what their access needs are and what would work with their neighborhood.
The other piece there is that West Street goes into Fairfax County and goes over to 29, and its character changes depending on where you are in that area, whether you're next to the school or the cemetery or through the residential area. So again, I think Paul's discussion about coordination and discussions with other regional groups and our neighbors' groups, we really wanted to coordinate between... groups and our neighbors' groups, we really wanted to coordinate between ourselves in terms of these routes on these streets so that one group knows what the other's doing, and we're doing things that are complementary to one another. So, if you'll look on the map, you can see that once you leave the city line, West Street continues as a dashed line in Fairfax, and we would want to be coordinating with them in terms of what they do as well.
Okay. I would, this is probably not the time to get quite this granular, but then you all are familiar with the conditions out there as well as anybody is. But because of the growing popularity of the businesses at the intersection of Broad and West, particularly the yoga studios, apparently, people who do yoga do not bike to the yoga studio because at certain times of day and night, it's not unusual for parking on the east side of West Street to be almost down to halfway to Parker Avenue, which is new, I think, for the folks who live there. And it has implications for the people who are used to parking there. Maybe it moves them across the street to the west side. The west side of the street does fairly frequently have parking on it. At any rate, the larger picture that I'm trying to paint here is, as we hopefully go forward to develop the intersection of Broad and West, I think there are going to be more commercial pressures on the parking in front of the residential homes, which is fine. It's, you know, it's not parking that the residences own. But I do think we need to take into account that, you know, vehicles and the parking thereof are going to be a continuing, and in fact, increasing component of life on that street. So, before we go deciding that, you know, we're going to remove parking on one side or the other, I think we should engage in the process that I know you contemplate. The macro question I wanted to ask was, in our quest for regional funding for, you know, walking, biking, pet activities, the things that are being discussed as part of the Inside the Beltway Project, does it advantage us to have a, you know, fairly comprehensive plan on the books so that, you know, when money falls from the sky, if it ever does, we've got legitimate claim to it rather than having to scramble around and say, oh gee, you know, we'd really like to have people walk and bike more? Is there an advantage to having, even if it's just on paper, even if it's not, you know, completely funded, I mean, it's opportunistic, whatever?
There's always an advantage to having a plan on the books. For one thing, when a specific funding source comes up, you can look for matches between what are the city's long-term goals and what this funding can provide. But also, it allows the city to be very strategic and very purposeful in how it goes out and searches for funding. So, instead of saying, ah, here's a great funding opportunity, what do we have that we can fund? We can instead say, this is what we, as a city, want to accomplish, what funding sources will get us there.
Mr. Z?
Thank you, Mayor. And thanks for putting this report together. I think you've done a very good job of trying to address the sensitivities of those who have not only two wheels, but four wheels. There's some people that own quite a few cars that moan the lack of time or effort to be able to ride a bike, which does bring me to the point I'm about to make, I'm going to make two points. The first one is, this seems to be structured heavily on getting people from place to place, and there really isn't much discussion about what happens when you get to that place. So, I think you need to fortify the, or create the sections on bike racks, preferred locations, best management practices. You don't put them in the lower bowels of the parking garage. You want to locate them right where you, you want to give them preferential treatment. So, I think you need to put that kind of language and bring some examples to bear for that. And secondly, bike share, you touched on, and of course, you're probably expecting so to take the bait, and I will, which is that I would like a staff report created, decisional and informational document in time so that we're able to inform ourselves on what decisions have to be made, and of course, with the, with the current Mason Road development, so that all of us will know what it takes to bring bike share at what appears to be the darkest green area you have on the map. I'm sure that's no accident. Thank you.
Ms. Connelly?
Thank you. I had a similar question to Mr. Z's about bike racks, and I think along with, it's important to have a place to stop when you get somewhere. And my other questions has to have to do with who you're reaching with this, and I know Bike to Work Day is next week, and that seems to me like a really good opportunity to get all those people that bike all the time, and plus the new ones who are excited about biking, to weigh in on this. And then, the non-bikers in the community also, I think we need to make sure that they are weighing in on this because, as Mr. Duncan points out, they will be affected somehow one way or the other, and it's important to make sure that people who don't ride as much, or who only drive and are frustrated by bikers, get a chance to weigh in.
Yeah, so, in terms of outreach, we're using sort of the standard suite of city outreach tools, which includes the physical postings, which we always do, but also city website, Facebook, Twitter. And then, we've been doing postings at the sponsors for Bike to Work Day. We've been doing it at the metro stations. We reached out to the members of the schools biking group. And then, in terms of reaching out to neighborhoods, we are on the schedule, staff is on the schedule to talk to the Greater Hillwood Association in June. That was the earliest we could get on their schedule with other things they've got going on. So, the staff is sort of reaching out, and we're always open to ideas about how to reach others.
This seems, if you'd like to work with the school PTAs, I'm happy to hook you up with them.
Okay.
This seems like something that...
Thank you.
I would just like to reiterate that the working philosophy behind this, trying to avoid the problems of previous plans that sat on, we're sitting on some shelves around here, was to, let's figure out the correct routes, how we can connect to places, that the city wants to take kind of a slow approach in terms of identifying routes, using sharrows and other techniques to help people find their way, and that it would not be a zero-sum game where people had to give up parking so somebody could get a bike lane. These things will evolve over time, and sometimes, a street may have a number of things going on, from better sidewalks, or something like Hillwood, better crossings for pedestrians, maybe traffic calming. But it shouldn't be considered a, and we're not taking it as a zero-sum game where this is the camel under the tent, the nose under the tent to advance a certain agenda. It's to try to come up with a plan that connects to other jurisdictions, gives us a regional connection, and also an internal set of routes that can be used for circulation so people know how and where to go. Again, I think just the city's reputation for being a place where traffic is, traffic speeds are monitored and enforced, that helps everybody be safer. When you get speeds down below 20 miles an hour, it's a known fact that people are much safer. So, you know, I think we're not looking at this as a way to, you know, put bike lanes in front of people's houses and knockout parking. It's to come up with a rational system, a rational map that connects to our neighbors and works internally.
And just one more thing there. I also think you're really forward-looking on this one because just in the time that I've lived here, the people who ride bikes are everywhere. It used to be that you would occasionally see a biker, but now, we see people everywhere. And I think if we don't do anything, they're still going to be here, so it's smart to make sure that we are connecting and using our streets in that way. Thanks.
Great, thank you.
Does she have any comments, Ms. Oliver?
Sorry, just two questions or points that I wanted to raise. One is, when I look at the future routes for the city, there are two somewhat dead zones. You were on that map, on the lower left and then on the lower right. I know there's hills, and I know that there aren't streets, but when I look at who is the farthest from the downtown commercial areas, and who do we want to encourage to not drive their cars downtown, and it's maybe a little beyond walking? I would look at those areas and say, what could we do by putting a bike route in to encourage that as an option? So, that's one of my points. And then, my second point is that, along with the bike rack policy section, I think we need to be really clear about what the rules are in the city about riding bicycles on sidewalks. And as we, as we try to draw people into that downtown area, people are not going to want to go back to park, they're going to want to just, oh, I'm just going a block on Broad, and I don't want to ride in the streets, so I'm going to ride on the sidewalk, and then that becomes a pedestrian. And I think as long as we're clear about what our expectations are about whether it's allowed or not, that would just be helpful and give people a sense for how we're going to share those two modes of transport.
Okay. I've got a few comments and maybe a few questions. First, I'd like to echo the comment of Mr. Z about bike racks. We need more bike racks, and we need them in the right places. I would suggest using some to kind of co-brand, for example, like some kind of emblem that says Little City, that's, you know, stamped out of the metal, or something like that, that shows you're in Falls Church. I think it creates a nice vibe. We definitely need more of them in the downtown area, but also around City Hall, some of our commercial areas. Hilton Garden Inn, been talking about bike racks in front of that place for eight months, haven't seen them. That project is in the modern era, it's not a project we can say, well, you know, 20 years ago, nobody thought about bike racks. That thing was built just a, you know, a couple of years ago. It needs to have bike racks and not in the bowels of the parking lot where no one can find them. It really, we need to have, make it a priority. And I'm sorry that we couldn't find a way to get a bike rack within any visibility of the front entrance of that place, because I think it is something we can do as a community. And what I suggest is that maybe we need to codify some of our requirements for bike racks and bike, biking in general, so that those things don't slip through the cracks. And so, there are definitive expectations, for example, about the amount of parking, bike parking racks we want for residents and buildings. For example, Arlington has one bike space per three units, residential units. A codification of bike racks for commercial space, in other words, you know, one bike rack per 500 square feet of office space, or whatever it might be. Also, the locations and proximity to front entrances, so that, for example, bike racks are within, let's say, 50 feet of a front door, so that people will provide those things. And I think if you build it, people will come, they'll be much more inclined to ride bikes if they know they have a safe place to put the bike, to park their bikes, and we don't have that right now. So, I think we may need to come up with some kind of ordinance to basically codify what our expectations are for particularly bike parking and our various new developments that come along. Let's see what else I've got. I like the idea of rolling bike share out. I think it is critical to get the East Falls Church Metro on board. It sounds like that's happening. I think our joint meeting with Arlington last December was a good start to that. I've had some further discussions about that, and I think it sounds like they're moving in that direction to allow, or to have bike share at the East Falls Church Metro. I think we really need to build on that and have a coherent plan that hopefully we can get paid for, mostly with developer and other folks' money. And so, for example, as part of TDM, Traffic Demand Management Plans, to have bike shares being an integral part of that. And I think it can and should be, you know, if people are going to take bikes instead of driving, then we don't need as many parking spaces. But I think having developers pay on an annual basis, not just providing the spaces, but actually provide the annual cost for that, which is, I think, fairly nominal given the amount of what a parking space costs, an underground or structured parking. And so, I would hope that we can find a way to put together a plan through developer contributions and also grants that can go a long way towards paying for a rollout of bike share in the next couple of years. Let's see what else I've got here. I think we really need to make biking an integral part of our TDMs and not an afterthought to really make it, because we've got a bike highway going through our city, you know? The WMD is a fantastic resource, and I don't think we've fully utilized that yet. And particularly developments like Mason Road that are extremely close proximity to it, to me, it's a missed opportunity to not have biking be an integral part of those developments. Let's see what else I've got here. I agree with the comment regarding Little Falls. By way of disclosure, I do live on Little Falls, but I do think biking a fair amount to work, that that's a natural way for people to go. The bike trail has an opening on Little Falls Street, and you've got City Hall, public functions, the farmer's market, community center, all sorts of public functions on Little Falls Street, and you're going to have a Harris Teeter in about a year where people can get off the bike trail and go straight up the street and do some, hopefully some shopping. And I don't know what else there might be that's going to come along, maybe some restaurant usage, other things. But to me, that's a much natural, straight shot. It's a fairly wide street as well, so I would, I would suggest you maybe give that some additional thought as well. Also, with respect to involving the community, I think that's critical, even though we're not at the stage where we're planning how these particular routes will look, we are planning the general idea of the routes. And I think what you've done is good, but I would encourage you to, if you can, take it another step and make sure that the neighborhoods and maybe your contacts in the neighborhoods know about what's going on, how it might impact them, and we may not know definitively, but just that there may be a bike route here in some fashion the other going forward, and let's seek some comments to that. I don't know if you've done an open house in this, but possibly another open house that allows neighborhoods to, you know, after they had a chance to hear a little bit more about this, to come together and try to offer maybe one last bit of input. But I think it really is important to get the community involved in this, and I think you've already done that, but I think probably doing a little bit more would probably be a good idea. Let me think of what else I have here. I think that's about it. Are there any other comments that people have?
I think you nailed it.
Okay. Ms. Connelly?
So, I'm looking at that map, and I think Timber Lane might be a good spot to include bikes, because it's wide and it's easier to bike on than West would be, less traffic, and it connects you up to West there from TJ. Microphone is...
I tell you also, if you, I know we've got the Bike to Work activities. If you, you know, I think it'd be great if everyone in council could try to make an appearance at, either at one time or at one time or the other, but if you could give us information about, you know, what time things are going on and make sure our friends at the newspapers have that information as well, but I think a nice turnout in city council would send the right message. So, anyway, I plan on attending.
I'd be happy to show up as long as I don't have to wear a Lycra.
Okay. Are there any other questions or comments from anyone? Mr. Sodder?
I do want to make one plug. There was one open house in April. There will be another one next Wednesday, May 13th, from 6:00 PM to 7:00 PM here in the Dogwood Room.
I'd also just say, this has been done internally on a fast track with existing staff, not with consultants.
Great. Okay, well, unless there are any other comments, we will thank you for the fine work you've done and look forward to your final product.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any, we will be going into closed session shortly. Are there any comments that people want to make, council comments, requests, before we do that? Okay, I guess seeing none, was the idea that we do it here or upstairs? Mr. Shidz?
Here.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, let me just say one thing about Solarise. Vienna's pulling well ahead of us. They are at 93 versus our 77, and probably the most important thing is, through Solarise, Vienna has actually entered into two signed contracts to put PV on their roofs, almost 14 kilowatt. And Bob Lozaro from NVRC says this is the fastest he's ever seen these contracts get done. So, it's good for the economy, it's good for the environment, it's good for us and the spirit of competition. So, all you out there, get signed up.
Great, thanks for all your help too. Dan has been one of the leaders in putting this together and shepherding this project through, so thank you for all the good work you've done. Are there any other comments before we go into closed session? Why don't we go ahead and, do you want to take a five-minute break and then go into closed session? Does anybody need to take a break, or is everyone pretty good? You okay? Does anybody want to take a break? Okay, well, why don't we go ahead and go into closed session then? Thank you all for coming, but we're going to go ahead and go into closed session, so... Let's go ahead, we're going to have to take a mo...
Jim, we're going to do a motion to go into closed session. We need a spectrum of the closed session.
So, upon a motion made by council member, somebody want to make a motion?
Connelly.
Connelly. And seconded by council member...
Oliver.
And passed by a voice vote of city council, council went into closed session pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711A3 for the discussion or consideration of the acquisition of real property for a public purpose, or the disposition of publicly held property where discussion in open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the public party, public body. Councilor Baruch?
Yes.
Councilor Connelly?
Yes.
Councilor Duncan?
Yes.
Councilor Oliver?
Yes.
Councilor Z?
Yes.